Mr. President, can we get away without jackets tonight?
For moment's silence tonight and remember, I'd like to first remember Sue Norrie-Luttrell, who is the sister of Diane Norrie-Roner, died this past week. And also remember the people in Charlottesville, Virginia, the events that happened there, the victims and the victim's family. Give them another thought. Thank you.
......................................................
City Clerk to the roll call for the city council meeting of August 14th, 2017.
Counselor Junta is absent. Counselor Tontar?
Present.
Counselor Vogel?
Present.
Counselor Zee?
Present.
Counselor Cameron?
Here.
Counselor Connell?
Present.
Counselor Cronin?
Present.
Counselor Devlin?
Present.
Counselor Earls?
Present.
Counselor Agaman?
Here.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Here.
We have a quorum, Mr. President.
Late file items?
Counselors will see two items on their agenda. One is just version two of the agenda. Frankly, we were carrying on the agenda that the bond for the garage was 4.5 million is 3.7 million. That was an old, wrong number. And we have Communication Number 97, which is an event application on In Street.
So we can waive the rules and accept the late file items?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you. Public comment?
Public comment.
Noel Lockman?
Hi. My name is Noel Lockman. I live at 35 High Street. And a director butter of the Marchess Hill project. And I'm here today to say that I'm in favor of the funds being transferred for the change order for that project. I think it would be a great improvement to justify the funds aesthetically, for drainage, for just increasing and getting back some of the park, too. So I think it would be a good project. I could use the funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ms. Vaughn Alley. One second. I also live at 35 High Street, one of the few direct butters to Marchess Hill. And as many of you know, we're very concerned as the on-ramp was taking shape and so are in complete favor of this change. As the butters, we worked hard on making a change that was more efficient and would benefit Marchess Hill as well as the rail trail overall design. Thank you.
Thank you. Ed Supren?
I'm Ed Supren. I run a driving school right at Newbury Road, Route 1, 96 Plaza there. Looking to see if I could hold my driving test in front of City Hall on a Saturday or a Sunday, maybe once a month. If not, I mean, that's like I said, also use probably the district court out that way on a Saturday or Sunday, just to, you know, give me an option if something was here at the City Hall that I couldn't do it on a Saturday or Sunday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Zarumba?
Good evening, counselors. My name is Chris Zarumba. I live at 52 Longfellow Drive. I'm here tonight because I'm up for appointment to the ZBA. So I wanted to come by, say hello. Say hello. A little about myself. I'm a lawyer in Boston. I have five years' experience in financial services and financial regulations. I'm raising a family here in Newburyport. I was actually married in City Hall, right across the hall. And I think this would be a great opportunity to give back to the community and help preserve Newburyport's historic roots. Thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you. May I ask comment?
Thank you, President O'Brien, members of the city council. The events of Charlotte clearly have had a deep effect on so many in our community. And as we witnessed these horrific events unfold over this past weekend, that caused senseless deaths and injury. But I am very, very proud of our community that came together for our rally with signage at Market Square earlier in the day. And then last night at 10 o'clock, Rise, John Giordano organized a candlelight vigil. And about 60 people came out and really spoke from their hearts. There is a resident in Newburyport who lived most of her life until recently in Charlottesville and was able to share, you know, pretty emotional feelings about everything that happened there. We, as a community, must unite and advocate for diversity, tolerance, and acceptance. Governor Baker called me yesterday and he wanted to provide reassurance that they are diligently preparing for this potential rally that is to happen on Saturday. They're saying that there is no connection to the group who were in Charlottesville. However, there is still some real concerns about this rally going forward. And there was a press conference today with Mayor Walsh and the governor. And information posted on State House News about all the efforts that they're doing in terms of moving forward to advance public safety in preparation for this potential rally. We will post more details as they emerge. I understand that there is a real interest in people in Newburyport on going to Boston on Saturday for this rally. So as groups emerge and transportation, those kinds of issues, we certainly will post that information. Public safety, we are very cognizant of the level of violence that is happening in our country as well as in other countries. And lately, it's been very disturbing to see that vehicles are being used as a weapon. When I went into the Sale-Boston event, there were large DPS vehicles blocking streets everywhere in terms of protecting the city against events like this. What we've been doing over the last many years is a roundtable organized by Emergency Management Director Chief Leclair, where we pick, we bring together all public safety, the hospital, emergency management services, Coast Guard, whoever needs to be at the table for whatever event. And we start this before we begin our season of festivals. And this year, our scenario was about a vehicle coming into Market Square that was full of people. Each of us go through our roles in an event of a crisis like this. And we try to, you know, strategize about our responses and to be as prepared as possible for these events. It's unfortunate that we need to do this, but I think it's important to be prepared as we go forward. Moving on, Yankee Homecoming, our 60th Yankee Homecoming, I think, was a real success this year. Congratulations to Robin Johnson, who was the chairperson, and all the volunteers who made this a very great week for our city. We will be meeting in the near future to debrief the week. And if you have any comments or feedback to me, please send it so that I can present that information during this debriefing session. The fire department, I'm not sure if you're aware, but 16 firefighters from Massachusetts are assisting with a massive wildfire that's occurring in British Columbia. Connor Clancy from our fire department is one who is serving on, he's from our fire department, serving on this wildfire crew. There is a blog that you can track what's going on. It's really, really serious what's happening there in terms of the wildfires. And we hope and pray Connor is safe and comes back safely to Newburyport to rejoin the force. But you can follow along with what's going on with that link I provided. In terms of an update on the intermodal garage facility, again, thank you for postponing the vote. It's important, after 10 years of work, that we have a full council to vet the last bond order for the construction gap. The purchase, and I thank you for all of that. The purchase and sale agreement was signed on August 1st, and our finance director is working on preparing the escrow funds. John Burke's expanded scope of work. That contract has been signed now based on the input to expand his scope. It's $14,750, and we will concern his start date shortly. Attached to your packet tonight is from Epsilon Associates, who will be conducting a further air quality study. But they were able to complete a modeling analysis of the emissions from exhaustive vehicles moving and idling within the new facility using this dispersion modeling tool called Air Mode. Their report is attached, and there'll obviously be more information forthcoming about air quality. But that at least is a starting point in terms of the modeling program that they used. Very happy to report that the $1.5 million from the Federal Transportation Administration has dropped and is in the account of Merrimack Valley Regional Transit Authority. That came at the end of last week. And we also, on July 20th, very, very important that we follow the Federal Requirements and Uniform Act. Wendy Lee, a very skilled attorney in this area, came and did a training for us that was set up by the RTA with all of the principals working on this project. Relocation efforts are proceeding nicely with Fuel and OR Colen Associates. The recent complaint by a butter will be addressed with legal in an executive session with the city council, most likely at our next meeting. Or if that agenda is too full, we could do it at the meeting after that. But if you have questions or concerns about when that review should happen, please reach out to myself or to Paul. Any other questions or concerns that you have, should have at this juncture, please do not hesitate to reach out to my office or the planning office as we move forward to the vote on August 28th. The DPS water and sewer studies that you have commissioned are moving forward. The water study is a little further ahead of the sewer study, but we anticipate having both of those studies for you by the end of September. We are holding a public meeting on August 23rd at 6:00 PM at Pitta Hall for the residents out there to discuss the hydrant project. The general contractor will be there also to present information about rolling out of this construction project and hydrant replacement. The Plum Island Air Vac system, the alarming has been completed of the air vac system with much appreciation from MIMA following the winter of 2015. They provided the majority, probably 90% of the funding, to alarm the system. And they will be on-site Wednesday to do their final inspection. ADCom has just completed compiling their data from the Evergreen Drill, and the information will be presented to the Water and Sewer Commission on Wednesday night, the 16th, at 5:00 PM. And I would encourage all of you with your interest in this project to attend. We had a Whittier Bridge Working Group update last month, and the completion date now for the bridge because of the failed pier is July 1, 2018. We are finishing up our mitigation agreement with Los McCorr for the use of city staging, which includes, in part, the paraglass for the shared-use path, the added work to the north side wall, and a sidewalk on Spofford. And there's other drainage projects and things that we're working on. And once that agreement is finalized, I will share it with the council. The Harbor Master and Commission, with the recent development of floating homes and houseboats on the river, there's been concerns raised by those owning the floating homes as well as butters. And the Harbor Commission and city have been studying other community responses, ordinance restrictions, Chapter 91, licenses, et cetera. And we hope to present an ordinance regarding floating homes and houseboats in the early fall to the council. One good piece of information is Jerome from, stopped by Tracy's house today to talk about the Chapter 91 license, just appeared. So that was good news. So there'll be more information forthcoming about his review of that Chapter 91 license. Dredging projects, the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development, Jay Ash, was in Beverly last week, holding a listening session on funding the state is putting together for dredging projects. The Merrimack River was last dredged in 2011 and requires regular maintenance to keep the channel open and address the shoalings, silt, sandbars, et cetera. Regional partnerships are key, and the Merrimack River Beach Alliance will continue to research and advocate for the safety and economic need for our city. Molly has presented you with an energy and sustainability update. The South End Organics Project has been, I think, a huge success. They are now switching over to a fee-based, volunteer subscription basis that, if you would like to continue, or that will be expanded to the whole city to participate in this organics pilot. Recently received a grant from DEP called Recycling IQ Kit. There's always a lot more education we can do around recycling, especially since the market is very volatile these days. We are about 30, 35% complete in terms of switching out our streetlights to LEDs. And we've just released an RFP to solicit proposals from solar PV installers and air-source heat pump installers to participate in the 2017 Solarize Massachusetts Plus Pilot Program, with more information in the update for you there. And finally, the EAC has been really looking at the intermodal facility, the garage, complete streets, walkability of our city, reducing carbon emissions, which has always been their mission. And they are working on creating a transportation subcommittee to really look at it from reduction of carbon and emissions standpoint. And I appreciate the fact that they're willing to do that. They want to use our clean energy roadmap and try and reduce the, you know, circling and circling and circling around of people as they're looking for places to park when they can go right into a garage. And finally, I would appreciate if you would move forward on Chris's appointment for the ZBA. They are, they have currently chair, vice-chair, two members, and associate member, and they've been down two members. And he has already participated in observing a ZBA meeting, has met with Ed Ramsdale. He's really excited about his appointment. I think, as you heard from Chris, he's very excited about giving back and stepping up to assist the city. So I certainly would appreciate if you could, they've had to cancel all the ZBA meetings in August as a result of not being able to make a quorum, and their agenda is very heavy. So I would appreciate your support on that tonight. And with that, if you have questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda?
Which consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for July 10th and July 13th. There are no transfers. There are five communications. First one, Number 90, is a letter from Dr. Mahmood regarding the parking garage to go to Neighborhood and City Services. Next is Communication 91, an A-frame application by Star Nails to go to license and permits. Communication 92 is a letter from Ed Supren regarding a driving school road test request in front of City Hall to go to public safety. Communication 93 is Botland Malde, 10717, to go to public safety. Communication 96 is the Friends of the Poor Event, September 30th, 2017, again, to go to public safety. There are two appointments. Catherine Harried, 100 High Street, as an alternate to the Tree Commission until 5/1/2018. And Appointment 52, Maureen Louise Palmeroy, 62 Boardman Street, to the zoning vote of appeals until 8/1/2021. And that is the consent agenda this evening.
Motion to approve?
Second.
On discussion, I just, on Maureen Louise Palmeroy, we need a...
Resume.
Resume.
Thank you.
There's nothing attached. That's one of the requirements.
Thank you.
At least I didn't get it. I don't know if anyone else did. So we need that for next time.
Very good.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Present.
Thank you. Move on to the regular agenda. I'll take a motion for the mayor's update.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move on to Communications. Communication 94.
Communication 94 is a event application on a Plinko event to be held 8/26/2017, rain date 9/2/2017, location 59 State Street.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second for discussion.
Go ahead. Yeah, I'm not sure where to send this, by the way.
Just clarification, the date of the event is August 26th, is that correct?
With a rain date of September...
Our next meeting is August 28th, is that correct?
Correct.
28th, yeah. So someone want to make an emergency preamble for it? I assume that's why it's in the regular agenda. They need it passed tonight, I would say. That's why it's there.
I was so moved. Can we do it on the fly?
Mr. President?
Sorry. This, Mr. President, we're not really 100% sure what this event is at this point. We were assuming it was going to go directly to public safety, which, okay, the date is problematic. But the issue is, we aren't sure if this is going to take up the entire sidewalk, how it's going to be handled, et cetera. So I throw it back to everybody else.
What is the wish of the council?
Motion to table to August 28th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call.
So motion to table Communication 94 by Counselor Agaman. Counselor Junta is absent. Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
No.
Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Oh, no.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
No.
Counselor Devlin?
No.
Counselor Earls?
No.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, motion fails.
Motion to refer to public safety and...
Second. I'm sorry, Counselor, public safety and?
No, just public safety.
Discussion, Counselor?
I'll take the bull by the horns and look on YouTube like other counselors did and figure out what this is and talk to these individuals and find out what's going on. But with that said, this will not be ready for this event, I do not think.
Counselor Earls?
There is a rain day, so the applicant could ask for the rain date. I'd like to know more information about tabling. I'm afraid wouldn't get us any more information. So, you know, tabling is not a horrible idea, except I'd like to know what does it entail? Let's get it at a committee meeting so we can all attend and understand what this is about. Might have to change the date. They do have a rain date, 9/2. Might have to be the primary date.
That's a great date.
Counselor Vogel?
I just had a quick question. Is the applicant here?
Take that as a no. Good guess. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both?
Next?
Sorry, Counselor, that was one number?
No, no, I voted aye.
Okay.
Communication 95, Newburyport River Run, to be held 5/6/2018.
Will we have a meeting before that? Motion to refer to public safety.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both? Communication 97.
Communication 97 is the late file. That is the request for an event on In Street to be held September 2nd.
Motion to refer to license and permits.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move on to appointments?
Appointments.
51, emergency preamble?
Emergency preamble, I will read for, as follows. Pursuant to Charter Section 29B, an emergency exists to the fact that the matter referenced in Appointment 51, an appointment of Christopher Zarumba to the zoning vote of appeals is time-sensitive and should be completed before the next council meeting, which will be held August 28, 2017. Therefore, the city council, affirmably declares that an emergency exists such that that appointment may be voted upon at its first introduction to this council. Submitted, Counselor Cameron.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have some questions on this. I guess I'll direct them to Chief Administrative Officer, and then we can get to Mr. Zarumba. But first, I'm trying to understand, so all of the meetings for the zoning board were canceled for August, is that what we're told? Okay. Because we're meeting again on August 28th. So why can't we act then? Why is it an emergency? And while you're at it, Maureen Palmeroy is in the hopper, right? But she's listed on the website as being a member. So I'm just a little confused about the situation.
Counsel Cameron?
I did have a discussion with Chairman Ramsdale late last week. He called asking for advice about this. And I believe they do, I don't, I know they postponed meetings so far into August, and I think something a couple weeks ago got canceled, it was on the 14th. But I believe they're going to have another meeting if he's reappointed in August. I could be incorrect about that. But I know, I know I'm getting hand signals here, but, and I think, I believe Maureen Palmeroy's a reappointment, but I could be wrong about that.
No, I don't think so.
No. Counselor Zee?
My question's for the clerk. Is an emergency preamble the correct vehicle for this? Because to me, there are two things here. One is we have to have two readings and an appointment, that's one thing. And the second thing is not being able to take something up on the first night. So are those two different things, in your opinion, or are those the same? Is the two readings...
Good point. The emergency preamble gets you around the charter requirement that nothing has passed first any measure which would be an appointment against. And then you need to waive the rules, too, because the council rules say no appointment.
Okay.
Which requires unanimous, excuse, let's call it. Does a waiver of the rules require unanimous consent or a supermajority?
Supermajority.
Any more questions on emergency preamble? Roll call. So do we get an answer as to whether or not ZBA is going to meet in August?
I didn't get an answer.
I don't think we did. I mean, so if ZBA is not going to meet in August, we have another meeting.
It's a moot point. We can do it in 28th.
That's only three days. They'd have to meet the last week.
Is the ZBA meeting August 24th?
Any more discussion? Let's have the roll call.
This is for the emergency preamble.
Emergency preamble.
This is to approve the emergency preamble. I'm sorry, who made that motion?
I did.
Thank you.
I second.
Thank you. Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
No.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
No.
Counselor President O'Brien?
Yes.
Passes.
Emergency preamble needs six, does it not? Why am I having a mental block on that?
We have eight.
Seven. Seven.
You don't, you have seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
May I, Mr. President, just grab something called the charter?
He has had this.
Called the charter.
I think Counselor Junta was going to vote yes, he just...
Two-thirds.
Motion fails.
Two-thirds of president or two-thirds of the council?
It's under our rules. It's two-thirds means eight, whether we have nine presidents, 10 presidents, 11 presidents.
Okay, move on to orders. No appointments, secondary appointments.
That means, Mr. President, we're skipping over the actual appointment?
What? Right. But we have to do something.
There's another appointment.
You can't refer. Yeah, we have to refer.
You're referring to nobody.
Planning and development?
Well, why don't we receive and...
Receive and file.
Receive and file. So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry. On the emergency preamble, you want me?
No, on the appointment.
The emergency preamble is dead, gone from the floor.
But he, this would still be his first, and then would be...
So it's a motion to receive and file.
Right.
As usual. Oh. Is it a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, you want the roll call? Oh, you want the roll call, that's right. Sorry. I don't think it'll change, but what the heck.
Probably, man, I'm sorry.
Point of order. We do routinely do first readings, though, do we not? So could we do a first reading if we so chose?
That's what it is.
We just did.
A first reading for appointment is a receive and file.
Yeah, we just receive and file.
And actually, President, it does not need to be on the first reading. I may have waved this at you, but I'm waving goodbye, so.
So this will reappear as a second reading on our next agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
And the first on the motion received? Was EC in the second? Was?
Here.
Yeah.
Or there?
No.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second appointment?
Second reading. Second reading, which is Appointment 49, Sandy Friedy, 49 Ferry Road to the Water and Sewer Commission until 8/1/2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Council Tanta?
Yes.
Council Vogel?
Yes.
Council Zee?
Yes.
Council Cameron?
Yes.
Council Connell?
Yes.
Council Cronin?
Yes.
Council Devlin?
Yes.
Council Earls?
Yes.
Council Agaman?
Yes.
Council President O'Brien?
Yes.
Want to order, Order 46.
Order 46 is a traffic order, Section 13-169, parking restricted on certain streets, State Street, no parking on the westerly side at 88 State Street, map 1 lot 16, beginning at the northwesterly corner of State Street and Prince Place and extending northeasterly for a distance of 43 feet. Submitted, Councilor Agaman.
Refer to... Motion to refer to public safety.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Order 47?
Order 47 reads as follows. City Council of the City of Newburyport hereby authorizes a pilot program to establish a wayfinding system of signage, beginning but not limited to the following two areas: Pleasant Street entrance to Tracy Place and the Mermack Street entrance to the Waterfront Trust lot. Pilot program shall have the authority to erect wayfinding signage on or about these two areas. The pilot program shall further explore amending the current sign ordinance to allow the city to efficiently implement wayfinding. We have a change on this. It is submitted by Councilor Jared J. Agaman.
Motion to refer to planning and development?
Second.
Second. Council Zee?
Can we add Public Utilities, please?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
On the motion?
Motion to refer to...
Discussion?
Council Earls? This... My understanding is this will directly affect the work of license and permit in their A-frame signs. So since we're adding basically planning, development, public utilities, can't you be of the whole at this point?
Yep. Is there a second on that one?
Second.
Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Want to order?
Just a point of order that just went to planning and development, the committee of the whole.
I have planning and development, public utilities, and committee of the whole.
Went to public utilities, too?
Yep.
Well, I'm on public utilities.
48?
48.
City Council approves the following licensed contractor application for 2017 construction year for water, sewer, drain layer, roadway, and sidewalk work, Scott Blood Excavation LLC, 21 Dark Road, Canton Falls, New Hampshire. Submitted, Council O'Brien.
Motion to refer to public utilities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? You want to... Pretty items, budget and finance. Motion to remove transfer 5 and Order 10 collectively.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Motion to receive and file?
Second.
Discussion, go ahead. This is the... Both the grant that the city received from the Stanton Foundation and a transfer for $25,000 for the match. The POCS department is withdrawing the request for the transfer and also has contacted Stanton Foundation and said that we're not going to pursue it right now. Stanton Foundation has indicated that they would entertain a grant application in the future from the city, and the POCS department is using this as an opportunity to tighten up their idea as to where it would be. There is also a Friends of Newburyport Dogs that is... Has pledged to raise money toward the $25,000. So we're receiving following, taking this out, and will be considered perhaps in the future. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Anything else? Motion to remove transfer 40.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve. The... Mr. President?
Was there a second?
Second.
Council Cameron. So this is a couple people in the public comments spoke to Marches Hill. The Budget and Finance Committee met on it, and we are recommending that it be passed by a 3-0 vote. This is for a transfer from the Stadium Capital Project to the Phase 2 Clipper City Rail Trail Capital Project account. It's a transfer of $74,000 approximately. That along with $38,000 from project contingency will result in a total of $112,000 approximately for moving the ramp over. So we received testimony both from Kim Turner, who is the Chair of the POCS Commission, and also from Jordi Vining, who is the Senior Project Manager. The finances, we did have some questions as to why it costs so much to move soil over, and Mr. Vining received a number, four or five different estimates as to what it have to pay for cubic yard. We're right in there in terms of the estimate here. Also, a number of councilors, the mayor, the planning department went out to Marches Hill. We met with some of the abutters, and there's wide agreement that this is the best design. It preserves the sort of the kitty sliding area. It preserves the entrance, and it tampers it down considerably. And importantly, it preserves disability requirements and access to the rail trail. So we recommend approval. Council Zee?
I just wanted to rise in support as well and thank the neighbors for coming together and talking about this. It was an important part of bringing this process together. I will say that my only note that I'd like to make tonight is that the good news is that we're going to be able to do this, and Ward 4 Councilor mentioned a lot of the benefits of doing so in terms of preservation of ADA access and so forth, while kind of restoring Marches Hill a little bit back towards what it used to be, which I think is important to a lot of people, not just the abutters. But that... The bad news is, based on testimony received, it sounds like we may have... We may have a need for further funds in the future to deal with the contamination behind the wastewater treatment plan. So I think we should anticipate some kind of additional funding request within a month, but I don't think that impacts this decision today. Thank you.
Council Devlin?
A rise in support. Not that I think anybody's not going to support this, but I think we also left out kudos to Kim Turner for actually designing the resolved plan. So she did an excellent job on that. And I think I'm the last person maybe who played a regular pickup game there in my early twenties, late teens. I actually used to play basketball there. That court actually used to be used on Thursday night, so.
Quite a bit.
Sad to see that go. What's that?
Was used quite a bit, believe it.
Yeah, and it's quite a... It's a little sad to see that go, but this is a much better result for that trail.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Put a basketball court back there. Thank you. Water polo. He's played basketball. Played there many times as a youngster. Budget and finance is done, Mr. President. Joint education? Nothing, I don't think. License and permits?
Nothing to report. You saw license and permits. I thought you... I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thought you said license and permits.
I'll just let you get the general government. Motion to remove Communication 28?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. President. The License and Permits Committee met on this, and normally in the packet you would be seeing the application and the insurance. That information is available. It isn't with the city clerk. It's been received. This is a little bit of a unique effort. This is... Smitten is located on N Street, kind of next to the playground there, and she wishes to put a sign up, as the note says, up on State Street. And we looked at it, and, you know, again, down the road, we're going to have conversations about wayfinding and how it affects AFMs and whatnot, but for the moment, we recommend approval to allow her sign up on State Street.
Mr. Agaman?
Yeah, I don't know if it's a... I guess I'll do it in the form of a motion. I'd like to make a motion to make the approval contingent on their removing the sign when they're not open, if they're going to have another sign on State Street. I would prefer that it not be left out there 365 days a year, but we condition that, that they have to bring it in each night.
Second Amendment.
Council Zee?
My only question on this is, should we consider adding to that as well a timeframe after which the... In other words, does the variance we are issuing expire at the end of this sign's existence? So in other words, if we become ready to implement wayfinding in further places, does this become a permanent sort of, whatever you want to call it, variance, if that's the right word?
Council Vogel?
Thank you. You know, that's a really good question. I'm not certain that placing a sign or giving permission for a second sign and away from the storefront is necessarily a variance. I don't know what the language speaks to. My gut would be that it would fall to the clerk to be renewed the same way as it does now. If that's something that you'd like to amend, I mean, I, you know, that would be fine to look at, but I think that we're heading down the road for wayfinding. The hope is that within a year from now, this won't even be an issue. I'm not sure we want to complicate it.
Well...
Council Agaman?
No, I'm grateful to the Ward 1 Council for pointing that out. I would not want this to be an evergreen exception. And what's going to happen over time is we're going to get more and more exceptions. We're not going... They're not going to come before us. It's all going to be dumped on the clerk. So, I mean, we came up with rules that were, you know, took us a year, but we had rules and we said, okay, if we don't want to change anything... Sorry, if the applicant doesn't want to change anything, then go back to the clerk. But this is a departure from the vanilla rules. So I would oppose the approval if it doesn't have a sunset and they have to come back and they don't want to come back. I would not support that.
Council Devlin?
I mean, we could propose an... I would propose an amendment to make the variance or any variances that we issue, they expire at the end of the year and they have to come back into us. They have to come to the City Council.
Fiscal year, calendar? Was it? Is there a motion?
Yes.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Well, is there a friendly amendment to leave posted on the floor? Go ahead, Council Clerk.
My question, Mr. President, was, we say sunset at the end of this calendar year or the end of the year?
The end of the year of the sticker. That was argument.
End of the year of the sticker.
Well, Council Agaman is looking for the...
Yeah, point of order. Do we remember where we codified this, so we can look it up?
Is it Section 12? Is that public ways?
Would be Section 12, I think.
Okay.
Maybe is it 12.1.5? 12.1.5?
Is it in the wayfinding?
That's terrible.
Yeah, here we go.
I'm pretty sure it's at the end of the sticker life.
What does it say?
Okay. It says...
Yep. We'll take a five-minute break. Okay. What do you say?
I can't find the term. Bear with me.
No break. John Wells says the amendment's a Chapter 12.1.5.
Yep.
Chapter 12.1.5. Is that what John's letter says?
Yeah. Counselor is 12.1.5, I think, A1, unless relief is granted by the council.
And then what does it say further?
Oh, I've... Mr. President, I found it. Okay, so these signs, each such permit shall commence on the first day of April and expire on March 31st. And I think it's prorated if you miss it. So why don't we just have them come back March 31st, April 1 next year?
Sounds good to me.
If Council Devlin's okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
That speaks to variances, Councilman?
No, that's the permit itself.
It's itself.
So the permit itself, though, goes back to the clerk without... If there's no changes?
Yes, but they have to come back to us for the variance. We're conditioning the assumption.
Variance, because we're amending it for the variance, but the language doesn't speak... I'm not arguing, I'm just clarifying. Right? The language doesn't speak to a variance.
Council Zee?
I think we can condition our acceptance separate from the sign approval process. So the sign approval process, that's what I think the Council, the at-large Council is suggesting.
I'm just trying to understand what the language says.
Okay, if I may...
The argument?
Aren't we...
If I could recast the amendment, I would suggest the amendment be approval subject to the following condition. The off-site sign has to be taken in each day at the close of business, and this variance expires with expiration of the movable sign permit on March 31st, 2018.
Done.
Second.
Second.
Is it second?
Second.
Second. Or Counsel Zied?
Just one minor scrivener is, I wonder if we should call it an exception so we can get out of this variance word?
Yeah.
I just think for posterity and for long-term, it's probably better if we just call it an exception. But, okay.
I agree. I second. I accept that. Counsel Colonel?
I take exception to that.
President, are we out of recess now? Are we back into discussion? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, if I, just may, if you could just indulge me, Counselor, from Ward 1, Ward?
Two.
Does it speak, does the language speak to that or not?
Does the language speak to that?
In other words, does it, does it speak to exceptions or off, to distances? I'm not arguing the point. I'm just trying to get clarity. And I'm completely comfortable with the amendment. I'm just trying to understand, because if it's so complicated, we might want to look at, going back to the language. It's not important. We can take it up at another time.
Well, I, to respond to Counselor at Large, I can't find the exception language at all. So, you know, the way I read it, you know, if I look at the section, it says each sign shall be placed within five feet of either side of the main entrance. I'm not finding?
It says, it does say, I'm sorry.
Well, where is it?
I don't know. But it does say that they, if you want to move it differently, you have to get permission.
I don't think I have the latest version of the ordinance then.
That would be pretty recent.
Because I don't have?
Counselor, if I might, I mean, under 3D, it says unless relief is granted by the City Council.
So, that's the exception?
That's the exception.
So, we've done that. Unless relief is granted?
We're granting relief. There's the language.
There we go.
We're granting relief.
Okay, we can condition our relief any way we want.
Yes.
Okay.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Need to vote on the amendment?
So, we have language now?
Yeah, we have it.
And a second, I think.
We're going to vote on the amendment? Does the clerk have that language?
I have the amendment to be two conditions. One, that the sign be taken in at the end of business each day. And two, that the permit would expire March 31st, 2018. That's the amendment to the motion approved.
The relief will expire.
Yeah. Yeah, I like relief.
It's even better than exception.
Expired relief.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Motion approved as amended.
Second. Counsel Earl?
We did discuss this in license permit, and I'm comfortable with this because if you look at the narrative, a restaurant owner basically gave up a space that is being utilized by the applicant. That gets kind of, I know that gets kind of a shaky argument because there's nothing saying that the restaurant won't ask in the future for an A-frame at the same time. But in my mind, right now, they are using a space that would almost be by right by the restaurant. So, I'm okay, even though it has the name of the applicant on it, it's basically taking the space of what the restaurant would use, if that makes any sense at all. So, it's kind of dislocating one and putting one in its place. So, it's not really going to, sort of off-site. It's not really asking for that the way we will see it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
I made the record show that I'm going to recuse myself for the next?
Two.
So, motion to remove Communication Number 85?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Which is what?
85. Wells Co.
Yep. Yes.
Okay. Here's sort of the other example. This is an applicant asking to be completely off-site. So, it's not taking the place of any sign. It's basically going on to a sidewalk with virtually no, well, it doesn't say exactly where it's going to go, but virtually with no storefront involved. So, the, my argument was, and going into this, I'm a little bit still undecided, honestly. We did not vote on this matter, by the way. I'm sorry. We did not take it up. We had one person recusing themselves. So, we have storefronts on State Street who are probably paying a pretty good dime to have a storefront on State Street. And as somebody who's, I would have to assume, paying less, being tucked around a corner, is now asking for storefront visibility for basically the price of an A-frame sign. So, I'm a little bit torn by this. And now, will this give precedent where everybody now who's around the corner can now set up on the street and be on the corner? And now we have an influx of A-frame signs, and none of them mean anything anymore because of just the glut of them? Am I exaggerating? Perhaps. But there are neighbors of this applicant who could ask for them tomorrow. And if we agree with this, we'd have a hard time saying no. So, where do we draw the line? The other one, which I spoke on before, I wanted to show the difference, that basically they are using a storefront by permission of the storefront owner. The storefront, yeah, owner, basically. So, it's a little bit different. Again, I'm still a bit torn about it. I don't want businesses to fail downtown. I understand that visibility means everything. But I'd like to hear some arguments from other counselors.
Counsel Colonel?
Counsel Devlin? I hear your argument in, 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 the general argument is that we don't want to open something up and just have a flood of cheap applicants. But I think, honestly, if we look at these in terms of individual locations, we can imagine what impact it would have on sidewalk activity, on the ability of people to pass unimpeded by signs. And I think we're going to have to, absent a, well, I don't know what else would take that place. I think we're going to have to judge these on a case-by-case basis, using our mind's eye to visualize what that streetscape might be like. And I think this is one of those cases where I don't see this impeding access to many people, but it might, in fact, draw some business to this individual and their business. And so, therefore, I'm comfortable with this particular exception.
We had this discussion, and we actually voted it out, but with no recommendation because we were on different sides of this. But not really. We were looking for counsel input. My feeling is I don't have a problem with this. It's tough enough having, you know, a business. I hear the argument, but, you know, that's why we're here. I think we've come up with a workable solution that this variance expires, and they have to come back to us. So, if there is a problem on the sidewalk and there's overcrowding, then we're going to have to address that.
Get some experience.
And so, I think we've come up with a workable solution. I just want to share with people, I didn't seem to need to on the last one, but I wanted to share with people what the Smittens woman said. She almost got put out of business by the construction of the fountain because people looked down Inn Street and thought that they couldn't go down there. Since she's put out the sign, and she didn't do it without thinking about it, that she didn't know she needed a permit, she said a lot more customers are coming in, and they are saying, I didn't even know the shop existed. And then, you know, I know John Wells, and I, he could probably say the same things. Business is tough, and I need to get as much recognition. One of the drawbacks to Counselor Vogel recusing himself for even the licensing permits is he didn't get to be able to tell us about that either. But I think we need to help people out that are in difficult spots. You know, I don't know if their, their business, they're in lesser, they're not on storefronts because their businesses can't afford it. So, you know, we need to give them a help. And I don't think this is giving them the same help as being on a street front. You know, so I think we've worked out a way that we can address this, and so I'm comfortable with this.
Yeah, I'd like to suggest that we pass this tonight and just go back for a moment to the very long feeling one year that we spent in public utilities, particularly on the signs ordinance. We wrestled, actually, with this exception relief theory for a while because we were worried about exactly this. The takeaway back then, as far as I'm concerned, is the responsibility ultimately lies with the city to do wayfinding. I mean, that is the ultimate solution to this problem, and it's incumbent on us to do it. So, we actually have now something that says we support a pilot program, which just went to committee about 20 minutes ago. And actually, this location is one of the places that has been specified for this pilot. So, with that said, I suggest that we do move forward because we're getting into August now. Is the sign going to be up next month? So, what I would suggest as an amendment is we just go ahead and condition on similar language to the previous one and just add in that, or until such time as wayfinding is placed at this location, whichever comes sooner. So, in other words, if we get around to it next month, great. Then we can get rid of the A-frames and really do the tests that we want to do. If we don't get around to it until next spring, then we should, we should allow the A-frames until, it sounds like April 1 or March 31 is the time. So, that'd be, I can formalize that into an amendment. I'll just do this. So, I'll make a motion to amend to add a condition to the relief, which is one, that it shall expire on, was it April 1?
March 1st.
March 31, or until such time as wayfinding is installed at this intersection, which is the entrance to the waterfront trust lot, as it's Merrimack Street entrance to the waterfront trust lot, whichever comes sooner. And I don't have a strong opinion about bringing it in at night, so I'll leave that.
Which comes first?
Whichever comes first.
March 31st?
Okay, whichever comes first.
Whichever one occurs first.
Fair enough.
Is the expression. I don't have strong feelings about bringing it in at night, so I'll leave that to somebody else if they want to do that.
Is there a second on that? Second?
Well, I, Mr. President, I'd like to add the previous motions because I do have a strong feeling about bringing it in at night.
I didn't hear what you said. Sorry.
I'd like to amend the amendment to require that the sign be brought in at the close of business each day.
I'll accept that friendly.
And I accept it's friendly.
Fair enough.
Counsel Devlin?
There's one thing on the wayfinding. We did discuss this licensing and permits, licenses and permits, that even when there's a wayfinding sign, somebody might still want to have their A-frame sign there if the wave, you know, in other words, there's still a discussion to be had about the wayfinding signs. And that, you know, that will probably be part of it. I'd be more comfortable just conditioning it the same that we conditioned the last one, which was, because we also never know when the wayfinding sign will come out and how it will come out and what discussions it will take or what avenues the discussion will take because there's some financial considerations there as well. So, I would suggest that we just make it the same as the last one till March 31st, 2018, and bring it out, bring it, bring it in at the, when the hours are, when the, during the hours of closure. So that, I mean, in the end, we're only probably talking about a couple of months.
Okay.
Well, before, let me discuss that amendment. Yeah, so to answer the Counselor at Large, I mean, I'm not crazy about these off-site relief, you know, because they clutter up.
Me either.
They clutter up downtown. And, you know, there was really a lot of effort made in the '70s when they redid Downtown to limit the number of signs. I mean, there was a conscious effort. And we're, you know, the only reason why I went around, went along with the Smitten one is, you know, we haven't got our pilot going yet, so I want to cut them some slack. But now, there's a suggestion that someone would have both an A-frame and a wayfinding. I mean, that, there's no way I can support that. So, I think you're protected, or this owner is protected because the motion that's already on the floor was whichever comes first. So, if we never approve the wayfinding, they're fine. They're in the same space they are. We have not approved the wayfinding yet. It's just in committee. But, you know, another thing is I, you should distinguish between Welco, this applicant, and a walk-in retailer. I mean, my understanding is Welco is a real estate broker, right? So, he's a Realtor? Okay. So, I mean, the walk-in business, I mean, that's, that's arguable, you know, whether he needs it as much as the others. I'm trying to avoid all of this debate by just supporting Counselor Zied's amendment the way it is, and then let's see how wayfinding goes. And if wayfinding doesn't work out, we'll be back here next spring, and we'll try it again.
Counsel Earl?
I'll be quick. I don't want to belabor this. Six, probably eight years ago, we were discussing the wayfaring signs, a different sort of machination of them. And the argument was that the A-frame signs offered more information. So, yes, you could have the name of your establishment on a beautiful-looking bar sign, but didn't say 20% off Mittens, or didn't say, you know, the menu, for example. incumbent upon the city to make these wayfaring signs, I think it's probably incumbent upon the chamber.
Right.
We can probably be a partner in it, but I think this is, like, really should fall into the chamber, that's what they're there for. The city wants to support business, but in terms of putting up sort of wayfaring signs, I think it's above and beyond asking the city to pick up much of a dime for this. But again, I think I will support this, with all the amendments that are made, and the arguments that have been made, and I thank you.
I think Counsel Earl, I think I was done with Counsel Ives, and she was meeting, at the time, Senator Ives did that wayfair signing, she met with the chamber, and then it just died, so.
Yep.
So, you're correct, thank you very much for bringing that up. Counsel Colonel.
Could you just read what the motion is?
I...
If you find it, it would be a miracle.
There's a motion approved on the floor, and superseded by a motion to amend, that now has two parts, that it would expire March 31, or when wayfinding occurs, whichever is first, and two, that it shall, at the close of business, be brought in every night.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's the amendment on the floor, yes, Mr. President.
All in favor?
The expiration, can you read that first one one more time for me?
The expiration is, it will expire on March 31, 2018, or when wayfinding occurs, whichever is first.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
One note.
That was on the amendment.
That's the amendment.
Motion to approve as amended.
That's what we're looking for.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Motion to remove Communication 86 from committee.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Earl.
Basically, same arguments, I would propose the same amendments to the same language. I like this one quite a bit, because of the quaint language of "tucked away" and "off the beaten track," so I give this one a little bit more favor, perhaps, but I would suggest the, make a motion to the same amendments as the previous applicant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
This is not pursuant to Plum Island Coffee Roasters, this is pursuant to all three of these variances, as well as all the A-frames scattered throughout our community from Story Ave to Federal Street, and perhaps beyond. I think we did some great work tonight here, but that does not matter a lick. The work on this is, is this going to be enforced? Are the A-frames out there having stickers, and are they enforced? And as of right now, nothing is truly being enforced, and we need to keep everybody honest, and it's for the actual good of the community, it's for the safety of people on sidewalks, it's for us to understand that everything is, in fact, insured, that the city is covered, and that all these are in the right location at the right time. So, while I support this and all the others, I urge everybody to make sure that everybody is properly permitted, insured, and properly placed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
That'll be off the license permit.
What in City Services?
Nothing tonight.
Planning and Development?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to remove item Communication 76?
Second.
Yeah, and Communication 34 collectively?
Second.
76 and 34.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Mr. President, motion to receive and file collectively?
Second.
Sorry, did you get a second?
Second.
Discussion, go ahead.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, these are housekeeping matters, so both of these are concerning Evergreen, the first chronologically, Communication 76 was a letter from residents back in June of 2016, and the second matter was this year in March, which was basically a memo from the planning board about why they had voted the way they had voted. We felt in planning and development, a week or so ago, that, you know, both matters are moot at this point, we've moved on, obviously, to testing that site for water, and will do that temporary taking, and right now, there's nothing before us that's actionable, so we want to receive and file them, just to keep the paper moving. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
Thank you. Mr. President, motion to remove Order 80, Order of Taking?
Second.
Second.
Mr. President, I could also move to remove that from Budget and Finance?
Second.
So, motion to receive, so have we removed it from? Okay. Motion to receive and file?
Second. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. Similarly, this was submitted by Counselors Cronin and Igraman back in September. Obviously, we have approved the purchase and sale and the funding, and the mayor has signed the purchase and sale, so an order of taking has no purpose at this point, so we voted in committee three to zero to receive and file it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. President, motion to remove collectively Communication 96 and Communication 114?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Motion to receive and file both collectively?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. We still have the actual, most recent agenda item on the master plan, is still going to remain in committee, these were earlier submissions back in October 2016, was a draft, and again, this has had a long history, and that's been superseded, and then, a memo in December, and then, what's still in committee, I believe, was, and we're going to not deal with tonight, was submitted in March, I want to say?
Yeah, March 13.
So, basically, it's still, the matter is still in committee, but these two items, we want to receive and file. Basically, I know we've all been to a lot of master plan meetings, this has been many years, and in hindsight, obviously, I hope we collectively, with the planning department and the mayor's office, kind of take a debrief at some point as to why this ended up getting so complicated and taking so long. So, it is still in committee, the planning board, through, you know, several joint hearings, a lot of changes, a lot of deletions, and we basically took out a lot of the specificity that was in the appendix that had all the actionable implementation items, a lot of those were taken out. We did vote in committee to bring it out to the council, and then, we became aware through a citizen who'd been following this process, that, in fact, maybe now, you know, in an attempt to find something that was going to get us to common ground, perhaps we had taken out too much of the specificity, so the planning department is reviewing with the state, you know, exactly what, you know, what is it going to take to get state approval on this? Again, the council does not have to approve it, the planning board does, but I think there was a general agreement a while ago, that it would behoove us to have the city council, obviously, involved in approving this, and it also helps on grant funding from the state. So, at this point, Director Port, you know, talked to us at our last meeting about a couple of options that he had, scenarios that, with some language changes, might find council approval, but that's not before us tonight, so these were, these two items are just to get two items off of our agenda, and again, we'll be coming back with the actual master plan at some point. Thank you.
Counsel Z.
Just a couple comments, I mean, I certainly attended my fair share, and, I mean, I personally think one of the reasons it's kind of gone the way it has is just deep divisions on things like infill, and some things, debates that we're trying to have, you know, as soon as tomorrow, through actual zoning amendments, so that's just my take on it, but there was point of clarification I wanted, it's my understanding that, based on, I sat through it, so I think I got it, the planning board has approved the master plan, if I got that correctly, so if there are statutory issues with it, then I think, you know, the planning board probably needs to work on that, I'm actually not sure how that could be the case, but nevertheless, I sat through a vote, so I think I got it, but unless I'm missing something, that may be a concern going forward.
Counsel Argument?
I have the same understanding as Counsel from Ward 1, so the planning board did adopt it that night with amendments, and we referred it out of our, we were ready to refer it out of our committee, that was our action, but the chair of the committee explained why that's not happening just yet.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
Just to mention, we have a joint meeting with the planning board on Wednesday night, with a whole slew of zoning amendments.
What time's that?
7 o'clock.
Thank you.
Upstairs, or Senior Center.
Senior Center.
Senior Center, nice.
Air-conditioned.
I'll send out a reminder.
Public safety?
Yes, Mr. President, motion to remove Communication 87, Walk Against Domestic Violence?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved?
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Colonel.
This is a event that has gone on for many years in Newburyport, it is Sunday, October 1, and it's going to start at Waterfront Park, it uses the Rail Trail High Street, Bromfield Street, Merrimack Street, and it runs, it's a walk, but it runs from approximately 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., starting and finishing at Waterfront Park. It came out of committee two to nothing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go ahead.
Motion to move Order 42, which is Stop Sign Independent Street?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, this was at my request, this, there was an accident there, this is the corner near the tannery on, so I hope you'll support it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anything else?
Nothing more.
Okay, thank you. Public Utilities?
Nothing tonight.
Rules Committee?
Got to do your point.
Put it out, Counsel Z.
I just want to echo something the mayor mentioned during her update, the Plum Island hydrant meeting, August 23, at 6:00 p.m., it's hard to fathom, probably a larger project for the island at the moment, so I just want to be out there as often as I can, reminding folks to attend that meeting, there will be impacts to water service, you know, there will be impacts to access to roads, because they're narrow, and so, it's going to behoove us all if we can all be prepared for it, and a lot of work has been gone into mitigating the impacts, but there will be some, so please come to the meeting, tell everybody you know, if you're watching this, to attend, so you can learn about the timeline, the schedule, who to contact with questions, et cetera, et cetera.
Where?
6:00 p.m., August 23, Pittah Hall in Newbury. Thank you.
Counsel Argument?
I just wanted to report back on our records request to the town of Newbury for permits regarding Plum Island, I did pick up the first set of boxes the other day, and they're in my trunk, so I'll hand them over soon.
Are they secure? Thank you. Taking motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Let's go, Charlie, come on.
I'm opposed, but let's stay.
Where's my phone?
45, that's not bad.